Call your work session to order. We're going to spend some time talking about roads and VDOT and programs. Want to just sort of kick off the conversation. You guys have a lot of programs and money in mysterious places and rules that we don't necessarily keep up with as supervisors, so I thought one of the things that we would do is ask you to sort of review some of the main programs and the funding sources and differentiate the guidelines with respect to whether it's rule additions or rule rustic or safety funds or all of those kind of things. And as well as another question we get frequently is how do I get my private road included in the VDOT system? So a little bit about that and then how that dovetails into the six-year plan and some of the thinking we have to do there. If you could enlighten us a little bit in terms of a review, I think it would be helpful. And I suspect there'll be a question or few or two along the way.
Okay, well, the first, the overview of the programs, thankfully Darrell has created a cheat sheet that I'll send you and we forwarded this to Josh. It provides an overview and we'll make sure that you have a copy of this and we'll submit it at the next monthly report of all of the funding programs. And it is, and I'm glad that you brought it up because there's such a big focus on the locality. The locality applies for all of these programs and we support you in any way that we can, but the locality is responsible for applying. And if, in our rural communities that we support, you don't have a team of engineers here at your locality to support you in preparing the engineering studies and submit the application. So we want to make sure that we're supporting you every way that we can. The secondary six-year plan that we talk about is ultimately rolled up into VDOT's six-year plan. The six-year plan includes federal aid funds that come from a lot of different sources, smart scale. So we're planning now for smart scale for applications that will be submitted in the fall that will be scored in the spring that the Commonwealth Transportation Board will ultimately rank and adopt based on available funds in 2019. Those funds will become available then, and Darrell, correct me if I'm wrong, to begin spending in 2021 so the construction for those projects then wouldn't occur until 2025. So smart scale for larger projects like a roundabout at 20 and 522, those types of projects, smart scale is the primary source of funding for those types of projects. Now, there's a concept called revenue sharing where the county can contribute funds into the six-year plan at the project level that can be leveraged against the smart scale application. Smart scale is cost benefit. And there are a lot of different criteria that we look to for benefits in the way that they're scored, congestion mitigation, bicyclist and pedestrian improvements. And ultimately, in the rural communities where we don't have congestion, we don't have a lot of backup, we do have it, but not in the scale that you'd have in Northern Virginia. We don't have as many pedestrians or bicyclists, so all of our score, just with the 601 curve as an example, is focused on safety. So safety over the cost is your cost benefit, cost over the safety. So one of the concepts that the county can begin considering is the application of revenue sharing funds. So applying VDOT, when you apply for those funds, matches dollar per dollar for the county's contributions. And the cheat sheet that I'll provide has got a little overview of revenue sharing.
But that only applies to smart skill funds?
It doesn't. You can use revenue sharing for just about.
It can be used, it can be mixed with other funding streams and stuff. It's just, they kind of want to make sure that everything is aligned. Obviously, the cleanest routes they keep off, the funding's separate, but there may be situations where we will cross over. There may be situations where we move safety money into a smart scale project, for example, just to help fund the project because, because the safety issues involved with that project qualify for safety money in addition to smart scale funds as well. I think we've done more like that as well, so those types of things do happen.
Right. The one thing with that, and it probably wouldn't affect us because of the dollar amount, but isn't the new cap on the revenue sharing at two and a half million with locality?
I didn't know it was two and a half.
Per project.
But there's, right, there's.
It's per project, yeah.
Right. It used to be five and I think they dropped it down to two and a half.
Well, you're right. There was a total of 10 state end local match.
Right.
And now they have dropped it to 5,000, two and a half, two and a half. The reason for that was because what they were finding out is there were a lot of existing revenue sharing projects in place and the way they score revenue sharing is they have a tier one, two, three and four. Tier one are your existing revenue sharing projects that already have existing revenue sharing money on them. Tier two are your new construction projects. Tier three is maintenance projects and tier four is the other criteria. Anything else follows into that. So what they were finding out was that a lot of these larger localities were going back and asking for more money that already had money on. So they said, well, let's see if we can even the plan field a little bit for the smaller counties and stuff. So they lowered the total amount to give the more rural counties an opportunity to get some of that funding.
And in similar smart scale, it's a two-year cycle where we apply for that every two years. There's $100 million across the state, but I think in the end, the cap that you're referencing is going to help us.
Right. And that's, I just wanted to make sure that I was on the right page there.
H-SIP, Highway Safety Improvement Program, that's another revenue stream from the Federal Highway Administration that is, just like its name, it's focused exclusively on, on safety projects. Where the Route 601 project, the current alignment is smart scale funded. The 2231 roundabout in the west end of the county, that's H-SIP funded, that's safety funds. So you didn't have to apply for those, you can, but our traffic engineering section applied for safety funded projects based on a rank of historical crash data across the entire county and our district. They apply for those at the district level. So the 2231 roundabout projects, H-SIP funded. And that either locality or us can do it, but it's primarily focused on highway safety, crash data, at-grade crossing, rail improvements, bicyclist and pedestrian safety programs. And again, like Darrell mentioned, if we had a H-SIP funded project or a project that had some H-SIP funds on it, we can cross pollinate with smart scale. Smart scale is ranked by cost benefit and if you can reduce the smart scale cost, the cost benefit goes up. It's not just the cost of the project, it's the cost of the smart scale funds that we're applying for that's leveraged and calculated in the cost benefit.
When you're measuring benefit, what is the criteria for measuring benefit?
There's five different criteria for measuring benefit. There's four categories, A, B, C and D, based on project and community location. And then there's five criteria. So if you think of a matrix, you've got A, B, C and D. We're in C, we're moving to D. And then you have five criteria that are, I've got them listed somewhere, Darrell. I know it's safety, congestion mitigation, accessibility, environmental quality and economic development.
Is there any metrics for those that, I'm thinking when you say environmental quality, how do you determine this one versus that one?
The environmental quality in the end turns out to be a percentage of the combined aggregate score of the other elements. So they just take the other elements and they multiply by percentage to come up.
So if I'm looking at safety, what am I looking at, deaths per year or something like that?
Crash data.
Crash data, okay.
It is, crash data. There's two different acronyms that we have for crash. One is PSI and one is CMF. CMF is the one that I like to look to, is the crash modification factor. The other one is it's safety improvement probability. And if you look at a signalized intersection, it has a crash modification factor of .9 where a roundabout has .2. So the lower the number, the safer the intersection type. So when we look at safety, we look at crash data and we look at proposed solution. And those two things combined with PSI and a couple of other things that the traffic engineers put together, come up with the safety score. But it's primarily based on crash history, PSI, the probability for improving its safety, whether you can or not, and then it's crash modification factor, whatever you're proposing to do to it.
And the safety funds, is that a competitive process or is there allocation by state or by region or how does that get decided?
It's competitive at the district level. So our district, by allocation, all of the nine districts have a different allocation that they will apply for.
That's all federal, that's all federal money?
It is. Based on lane miles and a few other things. The district will get an allocation and then we will apply at the district level for funds within the district. And then if we had an extreme safety issue, we may be able to sneak in at a state level and apply for more funding at a state level with safety. So we talked a little bit about smart scale and H-SIP and revenue sharing. There's a program called TAP, Transportation Alternatives Program, and that is really to sponsor small projects that really can creep over into the roadway, but focus on non-motorized. And we sent that list to Josh Frederick and we'll share that with you as well as far as TAP applications across the entire state. Because localities use them for streetscapes, involves pedestrian safety. They use them for rails to trails projects. They use them to add bike lanes to current routes. And adding a bike lane to a current route also helps us stabilize a shoulder. So it's a safety improvement for the roadway, gives them a little runoff area, but it also provides somewhere for the bikes. So the TAP grants are something that, there's approximately $20 million a year with a limit of $1 million per request, but I just received the list of TAP grant applications from localities around the state. And they have a lot of innovative ideas that the localities around the state are applying to use these funds, not just for trails and crosswalks, they're doing a lot of neat things with them. Especially in a smaller locality, a streetscape project. Well, streetscape project includes drainage improvements, that's the focus. But in order to have your streetscape, your nice new sidewalks and your curb and gutter, you're going to have closed drainage. So if you've got a drainage problem in a community, they're applying for a TAP grant for a streetscape project, but their ultimate goal is safety improvements and drainage.
Could that, you've seen our GWAP for the eastern end of the county and there would be some new projects there funded by developers as well as maybe even some of you guys. Could money like that be used on a, in a new construction to add either a bike or pedestrian or something that would not ordinarily be, be part of the project, that could be added on as an enhancement to a project or that had to deal with an existing condition?
It would be a standalone application. It doesn't have to deal with an existing condition, but it wouldn't be commingled with other funds. We mentioned H-SIP, safety and smart scale. Those funds can be revenue sharing, they can all be commingled together on a project. The TAP grants are specific to the locality and specific to the project. Louisa County is an example, just applied for two TAP grants and won them each about $1 million and I didn't even know they did it. When I saw the list come out, they had applied for it. They have some sidewalk improvements and pedestrian improvements that they want to make within the town of Louisa. And apparently they had initiated the applications for those before I came onboard 20 months ago. And they went through a round, didn't get selected, went through another round two years later and they were selected for funding.
One of the reasons I ask is a lot of the conversations that we've had about particularly that Germana and Williston area is various ways of transporting people around, whether it's golf carts or bicycles or walking trails or whatever. And, you know, it would be, it'd be really interesting to see if we could, you know, take, find, because to pull this off, we're going to need money from lots of sources to find a way of packaging this and enhance some of the existing conditions particularly to move people around, to keep them out of their cars for one thing.
How about something like the pedestrian overpass?
Pedestrian overpass, it could, I think it could be used for that. I was just thinking about signal, signalized intersection safety improvements where you may have a project that has a signalized intersection and then right behind that you have a TAP grant that would pay for the pedestrian heads and the pedestrian buttons. Something like the pedestrian overpass over Route 3, for example, or over, that would be a lofty goal, but at $1 million a pop, I don't see any reason why it couldn't.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that area in particular has some opportunities.
I've got a lot of people who want to work, who want to put a walkway across Route 3 and that there's not enough time for cars to get through it, let alone some of our older walkers.
Well, that would be a good example of an intersection that you need to offload some of the activity, not add to it. Or delay it.
Well, that's why, that's why, you know.
Well, this is the kind of thing where, you know, I wasn't aware of that, that program at all. I think it's, you know, it's the kind of thing that, you know, we, as a community, we need to be fairly aggressive about understanding these things because we, we have lots of situations that need some attention.
Well, I'll make a middle note too. There was a, a pedestrian bridge project in Northern Virginia. And across the spectrum of revenue streams that are available, they would have had to apply for the TAP grant. Because it doesn't, it doesn't have vehicular traffic on it, so it would have been something through it. Or revenue sharing in combination with TAP, that they would have done that.
Some of those pedestrian overpasses, they have ramps so that people take their bicycles up, things like that.
Yep.
Well, still need the ADA compliance, so they would have just, get the ramp, get the bicycles stopped.
We're all going to need that ADA compliance.
Some of us sooner than others. Can you stockpile money? Can you, can you get maximum grant for, let's say, a couple of years? Let's say you have a $2 million project, could you, is there a way to get, work the system so that you can do, you know, it doesn't make any sense to bill, yeah, bill halfway over the road and then the other, but through some kind of a phasing? Or is it pretty strictly defined that a project's a project and it's a million and that's the end of the story?
I would say it's, it's a, it's a project, it's a project unless it's used, if the funds can be commingled with others, there's a sunset period for the funding. And in the town of Gordonsville, received what I think is a TAP grant for the depot improvements there. And it was TAP grant. So they've got, they have a few problems with the depot project and ultimately those funds are sunset, but the project started and they're not going to remove the funding as long as all parties are trying to make progress on the project. That's been going on for a long time. So there's, there's got to be a sunset date in there, but I think that in the end, they're going to have to co-mingle funds with that project to get that moving back again if they have enough.
In your document, are all of these programs identified so we can, I don't, I don't have to take notes at this point, okay?
I know that's been one focus.
Oh, great, thank you.
With Vaco Transportation Committee, when VDOT's presented to us, that co-mingling?
Yeah.
If you apply for monies for a project, that's, and you get those, you don't get a second group of funding for that same project. You have to be very creative in writing your projects.
So that you're limiting that scope just to that? You can have a project adjacent to it to do other things.
Right. But it's, you, you can't drag it out because that's something they're trying to correct is, especially Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads area, they have all this staff that crafts ways to get more money out of VDOT and that's one of the things that they have pretty much done a great bit of now.
So we need a pedestrian crossing for Route 3 West.
And one for Route 3 East.
There you go.
Yep, and that's.
Well, Jim, you bring up an interesting, maybe if we get time, a little bit of a conversation about sort of process items. I mean, right now, a lot of the requests that we get come from constituents that call and complain or ask questions or whatever. And that's, that's a pathway that we can bring it to your attention. But it seems to me that they're, that, that's an insufficient process to meet the needs that we have. We need your help and, and your data and, and us bringing some focus to these things as well. So I think there's probably some improvements in the process that we can.
Well, for instance, if I think if we see what we think is a safety issue, we can go back to years that your, they plan, your people say, we have or we have not looked at that and here's where it stands in the, in their priority list in terms of relative safety.
And we, I know the Route 20 and 522 intersection is one that you and I have talked about several times. There's been, there's been some work done on that because it's a safety question and I don't know how you move something like that beyond the discussion phase, but.
Well, we're, this summer, I'll get into it in the county report. But we are still going to try to make some improvements there using the county safety and operational improvements. That was the next thing I was going to bring up. That's something that the chief, it's programmed, the chief engineer has provided to the residencies at the county. And we get anywhere from $60,000 to $100,000 a year to use for improvements that we identify. The intersection improvements at 608 and 621, just the site distance, that's what we use those monies for. And the signal improvements that we've done, the flashing yellow arrows, we use the county safety and operational improvement funds for those too. Opticon devices, we can use it for that. We are planning, once we review and get a solid diagram that we like at 20 and 522 and decide what to do at 671, we hope to pave that market, have signal improvements and using those county safety and operational improvement funds. That's yet another revenue stream. It's not a lot, but it allows us to do things like small intersection improvements where we would have to apply for H-SIP or smart scale and it could take years and years and years and years before that funding becomes available for construction. We use the CSOI, we use our state forces and we've already got our fixed costs covered, our labor and equipment. So what we apply to the project is primarily materials. So if we can do things at a savings using those funds, we just have to prioritize them in conjunction, get your consent for them in one movement.
Well, the other piece of that is that if you can, as I understand it, if you can combine a project like that with a resurfacing project that you're going to be doing anyway, that, you know, you get a lot more bang for your buck if you're, if you can do, make the safety improvement as part of an ongoing project such as resurfacing or what.
And that's what we're hoping this year for that section of 20, as it gets resurfaced, that we're just ahead of that. And coming south on 522, there's a little concrete median island in the middle, we want to take that out, excavate it down, backpack it with blacktop and have everything ready so when they have the new signals up, that there's enough room there to have left-hand turn lanes in both directions on 522, just using the pavement surface that we've got.
As you know, that's the issue.
It is. That'll make a big improvement. So we hope to do that this year and we'll do that with CSOI, County Safety and Operational Improvements. And those, even though it's not much, again, we can stretch those dollars out. The, the little culvert project at the recycling center, right there. We use CSOI funds for that.
That's, that's an amazing improvement. I mean, it was in there yesterday, as a matter of fact.
It's the little things there for that.
When you say equip, you have equipment and labor and you, all you need to attach to these is material cost, how far does that, I mean, using that labor and equipment routinely across the, across the district then, all the time, using it and just funding for materials at these different places?
Those, men and equipment, the, labor and equipment, those are our area headquarters staff.
Okay.
Rhodesville.
Rhodesville and Gordonsville. It's Rhodesville and Gordonsville. They're, they're working right now on 603. They're also repairing culverts from the rains that we've had, so it comes out of.
You've got them working all the time, but any projects that require additional material, you're bringing that in with these various programs for, for funding the material?
Correct. We sure are. Catharpan Road is an example where that was in the, your secondary six-year plan. We're using a contractor because we knew our Rhodesville resources would be on 603 and doing work orders. So we brought in a contractor who's working, they're out there today, working on that project. So the materials and the labor for that project, we've contracted out. We didn't go through the typical means where you have a turnkey contractor who would come in with a superintendent. We're acting as the superintendent and they're acting as an extension of us. So we, we had that too, but thankfully that project was funded in your six-year plan.
And also you do, you do a lot of your own engineering and that really makes a big difference as well in some parts.
We do, yeah. For what it worth for me as an engineer, we, we do, we try to do a lot of ours.
Well, but you have people like Andrew Scott Dunn and.
We, we do. Andrew does a good job. Thankfully, our traffic engineering team does a lot of the work for us. They, we have a consultant that supports them too. They're, they're ahead of us. Whenever we have another project that we're doing, it's a pavement remarking north Gordonsville where the crash was, the fatal crash at Inwood. So we have a scheme that we're going to present to them on March 19th at their council meeting to completely remark that and have a center turn lane. The traffic engineers did that with some of their own administrative budget that doesn't tap the residency. We're, we'll have to use our county and safety and operational improvements monies to do the work, but they had all the engineering done and have given us several diagrams that we've taken to the town to review.
To be clear, you say county, is it, is it residency or is it county specific? How is that allocated?
It's allocated to the residency.
Right.
For each county. So each of our three counties, Orange, Louisiana, Flavanna, they have their own allocation and it's based on mileage, it's simply based on mileage within the county.
And you don't move along the.
Would you not?
Okay.
And I'm thankful for that because if we could, there might be somebody somewhere else that.
You're beating a pass to your door all the time to game the system, right?
It would be.
Game the system by putting more roads into the VDOT system.
Yeah.
So the brochure that Darrell and Chuck Proctor have on all of the different funding programs provides you a pretty good overview. And we have another planning meeting that we're going to schedule with Administrator David Stat to go over these again and begin planning for this fall. We'll include the recommendations and they can bring that back to you. We've received a whole new, right now, our crash data goes through 2016, December 2016. So we've received updated crash data and they'll review that and prioritize intersection safety improvement opportunities for the entire district, they being the traffic engineers. And they'll give us that information. We'll get together and go over this and we have four applications that we can have for the county. Four this year's cap. So we could either look at what you've applied for, for the 2017, 2018 and sharpen our pencils on those applications, or we can submit something new based on the data that traffic engineering provides us as far as safety improvements. And we'll, we'll do that within, that's separate than the secondary six-year plan, planning meetings that we're going to be preparing for, for the secondary six-year plan that we'll adopt in May. Those are applications that we want to get a head start. Last cycle, we started at the beginning of August and they were due in September. This year, we want to start now, identify the candidates, begin doing the preliminary engineering behind them to develop the cost estimates and the layout, the concepts, make sure that you're okay with them and get them in the portal and submit it and not have that short timeframe.
But, but your, your team initiates that based on the crash data and other, other data, is that right?
We give that information to you and we'll make some recommendations, but the locality is responsible for applying, but we'll give you, appreciating that you don't have a team of engineers on your staff to help you with that. Just with the latest, with the last round of smart scale, we had several applications around the county. We developed and supported Josh's applications. He submitted them, but we gave him.
He's here by the.
There he is. Oh, very good, hi Josh, sorry I didn't see you back there. So we'll give him everything that he needs and then he submitted them. And we'll do that again, but we're limited, but we want to make sure that we're planning much sooner. Last smart scale round was round two, since House Bill Two was affected. There was $9 billion in applications for about a billion dollars in funding. So there were 440 some applications across the state. And in the, in the Culpeper District, there were 39 applications and there were five projects that received funding. The 601 curve was one of them. So we want to make sure this time that we're really looking at the scope, sharpening our pencil to try to get the estimates down so the cost benefit will be higher and they'll score better.
Alan, let me ask you a question. Go back to the accident in Gordonsville. That was, that was in front of Inwood?
That one was in front of, generally it was in front of Inwood. There was a.
The only reason I ask is you said you're going to the town council with the traffic plan.
Where's the line?
Right. Our GIS is showing that the town line is just south of Coniston Manor Drive.
Okay.
So I was just curious if it's, what the project that you're working on is going to be in the town or if it's actually going to be in the county?
It's in the county and it's, it's in the county in either case, but yeah.
But it's the county alone much rather than county and town.
We're looking at three things in the town and this one actually creeps north. And we'll share the diagram with you two before we do the work. We wanted to make sure that we had their buy-in before we even came to you about it. It does cross up, we had three requests from the town. One was for parking delineation on North Main Street. Other was improvements with pedestrian crosswalks at the traffic circle itself. And then in response to the fatality, if there was anything that we could determine that may provide benefit. And the one thing that we did identify that we're doing across the entire county are rubble strips and rubble stripes on the primaries. So we were going to Rumble Strip and Rumble Stripe Route 15 anyway. And the traffic engineers made a recommendation to include a center turn lane so that the folks who would want to turn left into Inwood would have a dedicated place that they could stop.
And that's why I ask, because Inwood is absolutely outside of the town limits.
It extends all the way, we took, actually took advantage of improvements that the town requested at the traffic circle and I pushed those all the way out to the foreland because there wasn't a smart stop location. It only made sense to me that we sent it all the way out.
That's fine, I just.
No, it's a good point.
Yeah.
So with the, the. So would the, the board like to see the striping diagram? Once the, the town is through with it?
Sure, I, I, I'd like to see it.
Okay. It is a large file.
I don't anticipate it being a problem, but I would like to see it.
What we'll do is we'll bring a thumb drive by, it's about eighteen megabyte file that has the pavement marking diagrams. And we'll drop it off to you, if there's an easy way for you to share that. We can print it, and it, it goes from the four lane all the way to the traffic circle. And it has a lot of additional signs, it turned into this big safety study that traffic engineering did, there's gonna be new pavement markings, new signs, so they're proposing to do. A lot of new improvements through there.
They're gonna move everybody to the right lane and then back over to the left?
It will, if you're coming south on fifteen, it will push everyone to the right and you'll have a center turn lane. If you're coming north on fifteen, they'll have a dedicated right turn lane for everything on the right side, a through lane. A center turn lane if you wanna get over and turn left.
Okay.
Good, so enough room for all of that?
There is, there's a lot of pavement out there. And the biggest thing that we were concerned with was the town, is we're gonna take, right now, some people use both sides for parking, on-street parking. And we're gonna take that in this pavement marking scheme, and we wanna make sure they're okay with it. So far, they, they find them. There, but we will, what we'll do is we'll take that diagram and we'll bring it by and show it to you as well. It does creep out into the county. And ultimately, I wanna use CSOI funds for that, and as a practice, what we're doing with each of our three counties is when we see that. We want to become a little more disciplined in making sure that we're seeking your consent. If we have a priority, that you're prioritizing, we're spending them, but we're trying to target demonstrated safety needs, and if there's fifteen needs across your county, we wanna make sure that you're involved, that we're not making those decisions. At the residency level with no transparency.
Well, there's a competition for who gets ahead of each other, going in and out of the town right there, so.
There is, the speeds, the speeds come from sixty-five miles an hour down very quickly, and all of a sudden everybody just comes together, traffic circle backs up, because it was designed in nineteen forty-eight. So you've got a lot of cars stacking up and traffic's just coming right into them, and we think by necking them down into one lane and pushing that back, that will help that safety too.
Yeah, you got a few trucks into that.
You're right, yeah, quite a, quite a few. The, the other document I have in front of you is a document called Getting Roads Accepted Into the Secondary System. And we have been receiving a lot of requests for bringing private streets into the secondary system. And there's a protocol for that. There's two different types of streets. One would be a private street that has been built to a county standard within the last twenty years, and not a VDOT standard. And it would need to be improved to secondary street requirements, and then we would bring it into the system. And then you would have a, a street like Flat Run Court, that was in your six-year plan. Where you actually took part of your secondary six-year plan funds, you allocated it specifically to that project for the work, as a rural addition, as a formal rural addition. To qualify for rural addition funds, it has to be in the system, available to public use twenty-four hours a day, for at least twenty years. It has to have right-of-way dedicated to public use, it has to be built to secondary street standards or be improved by VDOT to do that, like we did.
So your minimum right-of-way, does it have to be fifty feet or can it be?
It has to be forty feet.
Forty feet?
Forty feet is the minimum, and unless we approve it, it cannot be encumbered by utilities. We don't wanna have water lines and other things running on the pavement that will get constantly torn up or removed and fixed, added to, so. Utility encumbrances are another issue. There's a lot of routes that we've looked at where, in order to get your forty-foot width so that it drains correctly, we're cutting trees. And moving fence lines, and if that gets expensive, it's not prohibited. There's only a small percentage of your secondary six-year plan funds that you can use every year for an eligible rural addition project, it's just five percent. And you can only exceed, I think, one and a quarter of the mileage in the county every year. Which the, the five percent of your unpaid road funds, about a hundred thousand dollars a year or whatever that, well, yours is more, yours is four hundred thousand. So you can use about four pers, five percent of that for a rural addition. But the community in the county, the county can use revenue sharing funds for that, if that's what you wanna do. The county can have a special assessment to the landowners, we have a couple of subdivisions in Louisiana where the landowners are even thinking about getting together themselves and raising the necessary funds. Giving it to the county, the county inserts it into the secondary six-year plan, and then we would do the work ultimately, to bring it to secondary street acceptance and then accept it in the system. So there's a, a lot of different ways that the Code of Virginia allows the revenue to be generated, but it puts it all back on the locality. And even then, if you're using a percentage of your secondary six-year plan funds, we've got a lot of miles of unpaid road in Orange County. That are in the system that we wanna hard surface, so one would lose to the other. But this does provide you with an overview of how the streets get accepted into the system.
Did you ever hear back from the Enchanted Way, whether they gave you authority to check, to do the cores on those, that road?
We have not heard back.
Okay, fair.
So we'll, we're gonna put together a flyer and let them know that we're there, it's not a big core, but we just wanna make sure we know what the pavement is when it's up.
Yeah, I understand, I just, uh, cause I sent that to them and said.
Oh, good, have not heard back.
Okay. It's up to them. Just wanna make sure the ball was in their court.
And you don't, you don't accept roundabouts, I mean, not roundabouts, uh. Cul-de-sacs.
We. I'm not aware of a prohibition against cul-de-sacs. We do have some stub outs in certain locations where it stubs in and they have a turnaround, just because it's cheaper. And the new secondary street acceptance requirements really focuses on connectivity to an adjoining parcel. And making sure that that's included in the design when it's developed. But as far as, uh, as far as cul-de-sacs, I'm not aware that that's prohibited. We have several new subdivisions that we've brought in that have cul-de-sacs on them. Two that we're looking at right now that have cul-de-sacs.
Wilderness shores, one that. I'm, I was looking at a commercial road, that would be, because there's a. It ends in a cul-de-sac.
Right, and I'm glad you brought that up. Because there's three other revenue streams that aren't noted in here. Now wait, there might be. Wait, you brought them up earlier. There was the recreational access program, industrial access and economic development access, and those are three other programs that. You can, I think that you, you may have used industrial access for booster.
And also for the, uh.
Is there much funding in those?
The, I think that there is considering the revenue streams that we have, rec access, for example, if you have a department, a DCR-recognized facility. Or facility that's recognized by DHR, Historic Resources, Department of Historic Resources. It gives you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding. And, and then a dollar-to-dollar match for another, yeah, a hundred thousand each. So county contributes a hundred, VDOT dedicates another hundred. And then if you include bike pedestrian facilities, it's another seventy-five to fifteen thousand dollars. So ultimately, you can get four hundred and ninety thousand dollars combined with a hundred and some thousand dollars from the county.
And that's just for roads, or is there any other element, that, any other areas that, that can go beyond the road itself?
The key is access.
It's access.
So you're providing access to something.
It can be, it can be a parking area.
Right.
Well, I'm thinking of, uh.
Playground.
That piece of property that DHR owns now, down, uh, where the old Walmart, where the Walmart was originally supposed to go.
It takes up.
Because otherwise it's just gonna sit there and languish.
Right. One, one, uh, I've had some experience with this recreational access and using for boat ramps or for put-ins, and I think in some of our conversations about Rapid安 and public access. I think that would have been, that is a program that would certainly figure into the mix if there were public access, um.
Tap, a combination of tap and the rec access.
And that defers a lot of the construction cost, it doesn't, you can't use it to acquire property, but you can use it to get people back there in parking lots and things. And then certainly industrial access funds, like the Lee Industrial Park, or if we start doing something in, in the Germana World Coast area, then that certainly would.
All that land we looked at, uh, that Mansour had.
That's a river there.
Along the river there.
Right.
That, that would be a magnificent period of.
To be able to access.
Getting access down to that, uh, whether there's a ramp or just a, a long riverside park.
Right, and tap could be a tool in that as well, and having DHR designation, that's typically been our impediment to leveraging those funds. Is gaining DHR designation, gaining DCR's consent to apply for the funds and get the Commonwealth Transportation Board to approve them. If it's already DHR designated.
Well, it's owned.
Yeah, they own, PC Star, but they actually own.
That, that's.
That's necessarily the best place to put a park.
It would be a great place for a mountain bike park, I'd love to mountain bike over there, so, fish, fly fish down there somewhere.
And one of the things with these recreational access, you know, back to the boat, uh, because the. The, the scenario would be not a motorboat put-ins for the Rapid安, it would be, you know, paddle, uh, uh, human-powered stuff. Uh, you wouldn't need a full boat ramp, but, uh, Gaming Inland Fisheries actually has money to help develop those actual stuff that goes in the water, and then you would tag it up with these funds to get people back there and parked and such. So that, those are revenues out there, it, it would come to bear if we were able to work with private property owners.
VDOT's got a really neat page on their website now, it's VDOT in your neighborhood, and it, it not only talks about traffic calming, it has guidelines for these programs. But what we'll do, if you've already got this, we'll take the three different program summaries, another similar sheet to this for those three, and send it to you as well, so you can distribute that. Those are good tools, we've, we've applied recently, we have one project in Louisiana County that's going for the Commonwealth Transportation Board this month. And it's to extend an existing route in the town of Mineral into Walton Park and Hard Surface to connect to a parking area. We have another one where they have a, a pool, Louisiana County Aquatic Center, and we're actually trying to install a left-hand turn lane on twenty-two, two oh eight primary. Because it's required for them to be able to turn left, they need a left turn lane to be able to access the aquatics center. So it, there's a lot of neat ways that we can apply for and try to, it's taken us some time, it's about twelve months per application. By the time we put everything together and give it to the central office to, to meet their checklist, but it's a, two, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with zero match. It's good money.
Alan, uh, just a couple of quick questions, um. Route six ten, Willholtz Mill Road, um, there was a developer there who was interested in doing a rural rustic and, and using the county as the pass-through. And apparently he's been told that it, the window closed in November and won't open again for two years, is that, is that correct information or is it, or, or no? This is a road that starts in orange and goes into green and.
And the developer?
The developer was gonna be the one to put up the money, but was gonna use, you know, coordinate it through the county to pay the county share.
Well, if, if for some reason they said it was gonna be a two-year cycle, then they would be referring back to one of these programs, that they were gonna use it in conjunction with an application for other funds to do. Right, revenue sharing, that, that's what I think it would be.
He, he, I'm, I'm kinda trying to understand it, because he, he had met with me and given me some, some maps on it, and it was gonna be under, as I understood it, rural rustic, but then. He called me a couple days ago and said that VDOT had told them that the window had closed in November and, and wasn't gonna be opening it for two years.
Yeah, we'll have to check on that.
Talking about the application process that closed, it's a two-year cycle for FY nineteen and twenty, it won't open again until like probably November two thousand twenty. For the FY twenty-one, twenty-two cycle, it's every other year that they're doing revenue sharing.
Revenue sharing, right, it would be a rural rustic project.
So that's not connected to rural rustic though, is it?
That's a, a rural rustic project would be an existing VDOT route that isn't hard surface, that has fifty vehicles a day, and the rural rustic program in itself has certain criteria.
Well, this is a VDOT road that doesn't, that is, it's a dirt road, and they were gonna, they were gonna upgrade it to a, to a hard surface.
If the developer was gonna provide a hundred percent of the funding, then that to me is an easy decision. If it's in conjunction with other revenue that the locality, that Green County has to apply for, leveraging that funds, I can see why that would take two years.
Well, the, yeah, my understanding was it was a, Orange County wasn't being asked to put up anything, and I, I don't think Green County was, my understanding was it was a fifty-fifty between the developer and, and VDOT, so. You're saying that doesn't sound, that doesn't sound right to you?
It, it doesn't sound entirely correct, if you had a developer tomorrow that would. Proffer monies to the county to Hard Surface six oh two, and the county provided those funds in your secondary six-year plan, I'd pay it tomorrow.
What I've, what I've seen happen in the past, Alan, I know Madison did it, I think, uh, where the developer gave county money. And they use that as their half to match the state money for rev, through revenue sharing.
Right, right, that's, that was.
That makes sense, and that's a two-year application, and it's offset, the revenue sharing is offset from SmartScale, so it would be. Opposite years, revenue sharing is gonna be in the odd years. So that would make sense that they could do that.
Okay. My other question was, who had the bright idea of scheduling the, uh, bridge public hearing on Valentine's Day?
Mrs. Saunders isn't very happy with that. The same, the same project manager had another public hearing on December thirteenth, which happened to be my anniversary, so I got to come home from that and tell them that I'm gonna miss Valentine's Day as well. She would just move to Orange, it would make it a lot easier. But that's, that's the information that I had prepared as far as a general discussion. We also have in your, the packets where we identified routes for the secondary six-year plan. And if you want to take some time and review these, I can come back. And we can go over. The proposed funding that we're anticipating. Is simply taking what we had in twenty twenty-two and stretching it out to twenty twenty-three, so that's why the, the numbers are increased a little bit, but we're assuming. The same amounts for Telaffy, ninety-nine thousand dollars, and then a little bit of additional funding in the future. And the routes are listed across the county in several different ways, either by average daily traffic, which routes we're working on now. Which routes are hard surface, which ones are not. And. If you wanna take some time again over the next month and digest some of this, or we can meet offline, to go through, or do you wanna go through it right now? Was that your expectation, that you wanted to review it all tonight? Be happy to.
When's the public?
Well, we have eleven minutes to, to start another meeting, but, uh.
I've talked too much.
The public hearing on this, Alan, is May.
Right, that's correct.
There's various in time. Then you advertise after the board has worked through whatever it needs to work through, so we would need to do that work in advance of that.
That in the current six-year plan, secondary six-year plan that you have on TAB three. It includes as a priority. Route six oh three and six oh six, we're working on both of those now. The next route in the list is Route six oh eight Meadows Road. And we're also doing planning and preparation work on that as well, and if we can. Once we get the funding, you'll note that for Meadow Road Route six oh eight, July the first, twenty eighteen is when FY nineteen begins. So the remaining funds for six oh eight will come available July the first of this year, and we plan to begin work on that route as well this year, as soon as we can get done with six oh three. The two routes following that, Flat Run Court, Rapid安 Run Court, we did those already. We jumped ahead of the line because we had resources for those, so we completed those. Old Office Road is next, in the eastern segment between six eleven and six ninety-two, we broke that into three separate routes. And then the next route is Route six thirty. And one recommendation that I had was for six oh two west of six ninety-two. It has a higher average daily traffic than the eastern section. So for me, as a recommendation, it makes sense that while we're doing that work on six oh two, that we would simply cross the street at six ninety-two and continue west.
That's been the request I've gotten from some constituents as well.
And as, as far as the, the next route in line, based on what we have in your six-year plan, that would be a recommendation that we have. But there are also several other routes that are listed that have the necessary traffic volumes of fifty vehicles per day that are unpaved, that we could also consider. And based on your needs, if you wanna prioritize some of those routes and incorporate them into the plan, we'll prepare cost estimates for you and get those back to you in just a few weeks. You can identify the priorities, put those on a public notice and advertise them to your citizens, and then, any questions, we'll address them quickly and make sure that we circle back around in April. To provide you any information that you would need. And then any questions, we'll address them quickly and make sure that we circle back around in April to provide you any information that you would need from me.
Just real quick question for you. Um, I know on a number of the roads that you all are doing the early work on, and six oh eight being one of them. What are the little, they're putting out stakes? Just, it seems sporadically, but I know there, there's a method behind it. Wha- what are those or what is the preparation that those are doing?
They are simply measuring distances to calculate quantities and quantities.
I, I've had a number of people ask me and I've said, well, I know it has something to do with prepping the road, but that's all that I knew, so, uh, at least now I can answer them.
Anything that looks like a survey marker gets attention.
Exactly, exactly.
And I was gonna go into that a little bit more in our, in our quarterly update.
Okay.
I'll give you an update on those and what we're doing out there.
Fantastic, great.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you. Yes, sir.
How long is your quarterly update likely to last?
I was prepared to come back afterwards and get that.
We thought we'd get you.
Well, you, you are.
Gentlemen, I'd be glad to wait.
Fourth on the agenda, okay. I was gonna say you're fourth on the agenda for that.
I look forward to it.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We have about seven or eight minutes, something like that. Call the meeting order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You, you sounded great. Okay, adoption of the agenda. Anybody have any changes or additions to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Special presentation, service awards. Mr. David.
As you're making your way, I'll, uh, identify the first employee, uh, receiving a service award. First employee is, is Josh Frederick, our planning director, is receiving a five-year service award. And our next employee is Stephanie Straub, our financial management specialist, receiving a five-year service award. And I think her son Emery's coming forward too. Mr. Chairman, we, we also have Rita Fleming, who couldn't be with us today, a benefit program specialist. Oh, she is? Oh, I didn't. Come on up. Come on down. Come on down. Yes, uh, I think we may.
Must I give it away already?
That's okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, we got our, our signals crossed. Rita's.
We don't have a picture in here.
Yeah, is our, is our, is a benefit program specialist in our department of special, uh, Department of Social Service. She's receiving a twenty-five-year service award. Sorry for the cross signals there, Rita. Uh, next, uh, who's not here today is Loretta Morris, Circuit Court Deputy Clerk, who's receiving a five-year service award. And that concludes all of our service awards.
Next item on the agenda, I think I stated.
Yes, there's a presentation, presentation of a resolution of appreciation for Ann Reardon. I think the resolution is there.
I have the resolution. Ann?
I'm gonna read a little bit about you.
And I may cry.
Now, this is all big stuff. A resolution of appreciation for Ann Reardon. Whereas Ann Reardon has faithfully served the citizens of Orange County as a representative on the Orange County Youth Commission for thirty-three years. Beginning her service in nineteen eighty-four, she was one of the earliest commission members. Ann, whereas the Orange County Youth Commission was formed by the Board of Supervisors, is nineteen eighty's a policymaking body for the Office on Youth, was later transitioned as an advisor, to an advisory capacity, and is intended to foster wholesome youth development, prevent juvenile delinquency by valuing the health, safety, and welfare of all of the county's citizens. Ann, whereas in keeping with the intended purpose, Ann Reardon has made substantial contributions toward youth services throughout the county. And to the continued success and operation of the county Office on Youth, giving self-asslee of the time and talents. And whereas during her service, Ann Reardon was instrumental in the establishment of the Youth Council, and served for many years as a Youth Council Advisor, ensuring the members were provided with the opportunity to meet with state legislatures at the legislative dinner hosted in Orange every year, and during the annual Youth Council Legislative Day trip to Richmond, provide support for the annual Jarvis Huff Award Program, and served as a, as a member of Michael's gift. Ann, whereas whether it be attending a youth commission meeting, obtaining grant funding, or participating in a local youth event, Ann Reardon has at all times demonstrated a keen interest in the welfare of our community, its citizens, and particularly the county's youth, and has left a permanent mark on the county through her service, passion, and dedication. It got a driving, definite driving force in Orange County. Now, therefore being resolved, on this twenty-third day of January of twenty eighteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby extends its admiration and appreciation to Ann Reardon for her determination, dedication, and devoted service to the Orange County Youth Commission and to the well-being of the youth of Orange County. Signed, James K. White, Chairman.
Love you.
Congratulations.
Okay. Tonight, our business spotlight is, uh, Mr. Malvut of the Milano Uno Pizzeria and Grill. Come up to the front for you a little please. Tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're doing.
It's making good pizza. Yes.
So, I hear you, yeah?
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. I would like to thank you all for inviting me. I'm happy and I'm lucky to be in Orange, really. I'm happy to be here in this town. I feel home from the first visit to Orange. People welcome me and wished me a good luck and successful business. I appreciate the support from the town of Orange and from the community. I'm proud of you. I'm proud to be in Orange. About me, my name is Abdul Mahsin Ali Mahmoud. I am from Egypt. I born in small village, has an amazing view on the Nile River and the Mediterranean Sea. My village has many palm tree. We have many fishing boat. We fish and also we hunting. I love sport. I love play soccer and I love swimming. I love traveling to discover the world. My family is very important to me. My family is everything about my business. First, I'm going to talk about the name, why I choose Milano Ono. Milano Ono Pizzeria and Grill. Milano is an Italian city, like New York City in USA. Ono is number one, so Milano Ono. I discussed with my cousin in Italy and we bring many names till we decided to name this name. No one has this name in the entire world. Together Milano Ono. There is Milano and there is Ono, but Milano Ono together, I'm the only one. Now, Ono Pizzeria Chicago, the company franchise that presented this dish, he going to fight to take the Ono off, but I fight with them. About, uh, what Milano serve, Milano serve New York and the New Jersey style pizza. Thin crust, homemade, fresh daily dough, homemade fresh tomato sauce with our secret recipe and the fresh ingredient. Homemade fresh lasagna, like many customer bragging about our amazing pizza and calzone, they said best pizza in town. Our Philly steak cheese is very delicious. I sell a lot of Philly steak a day, number one sales sub in the restaurant. Milan, uh, Milano serve Italian dishes, some of Greek dishes, burger and salad include too. Milano is located in the former Mario's Pizzeria at one fifty-three East Mini Street, Orange, Virginia. We present dining in, call for carry out, and soon for delivery. We offer eight dollars an hour for driver, because many people ask about delivering. About my embalweis, Milano has from seven to twelve embalweis, sometimes seven to ten. About my ba, my business and my other restaurant in USA. I become a burner of Queens Pizza in Ritchie Creek, Virginia in two thousand fifteen. And I become a burner of Queens Pizza Union, West Virginia location in two thousand sixteen. And two thousand eighteen, I am the official owner of Milano Ono Pizzeria and Grill in Orange, Virginia. My history with the kitchen started in two thousand four in Egypt, when I worked on the platform in the sea for the transform company, is USA company working in Egypt. I learned the art of cooking from Arabian chef. I always read and study about the pizza, kitchen, and food. My dreams, I have a dream before I come to Orange. I planning to have mini Milano in the next five years. I am never give up. I am always optimist. I fight to reach my dreams. My request from the community, please have passion with us, have passion with any restaurant in town. We are here to serve you, but we are human too. We have good days, we have bad days. We working hard to make you happy. You are the reason we are here in town. Without you, we can't succeed. The fundraising, I wanted to spread as much of Milano Pizzeria love as possible to the neighborhood. We are in, we are in and focus on helping those who live in our local community. We pride ourselves in community and we'd love to partner with you on this fun program. We cater. Italian food is known for a lot of things, rich sauces, fresh pasta, and more than little basil and the olive oil. We mix part of spaghetti, part of lasagna, big bowl of salad and pizza pies. That's how we did it in the old country. Our catering menu will be amazing. Offering free Basamile pasta with any catering order, the pasta you never had before. Basamile pasta, our price will surprise you. We cater. We are ready for your party. Quality food and quality pizza. When you stop by Milano Pizzeria, you will find a bag of Italy and Greece. This is place to go for pizza, calzone, stramboli, pasta, gyro, salad, burger, hot and cold subs. We only serve this high-quality food at Milano Pizzeria. Join the team. We need talented people to keep Milano running smoothly. Words that I love and I'm going to conclude with it. Feeling bad means you still alive. Feeling other bad means you still human. I am human. At Milano Pizzeria, you will never walk alone. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me.
And their subs, their salads, their pizzas, everything in there is absolutely delicious.
I, I, I moved when we had, had their pizza to our dinner.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, absolutely.
That's right.
Even my son, the dedicated dominoes guy, has discovered that that's better.
Okay. All right, Mr. Saunders, Virginia Department Transportation Quarterly Update.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Alan Saunders. I'm the residency engineer in Louisa Residency for the Virginia Department of Transportation here for your quarterly update. I did wanna note with me here tonight is our new residency operations engineer, Jonathan Rumbaw. And Jonathan is a graduate of Virginia Military Institute. He's just started Officer Candidate School, and we're very thankful to have him. Projects is gonna be one of his focus points in the residency, so he's gonna help us keep up with all the work I'm gonna talk about tonight. With fatalities, thankfully, we have no new fatal crashes to report since our last quarterly update. The smart scale, we did go over smart scale. We are going to follow back up and schedule meetings of, within hopefully the next three weeks with the county, just to go over some of the things that we discussed tonight and follow up with a list of recommendations from the traffic engineers for smart-scale candidate applications for you to review. Projects in preliminary engineering, the Greenwood Road Bridge, our public hearing for that is February the fourteenth this week. And noted, the next project in line is Route six oh eight Meadows. All of the rural rustic projects that are in your secondary six-year plan, we are doing the preliminary engineering work on them now. So, you'll begin to see and your residents will see survey stakes. We're using those things just to delineate the scope of work and measure quantities and do preliminary engineering for those routes. The goal is to have all of those projects shovel-ready. So, in the event we did identify funding, we have a surplus on one project that we can carry to another, we'll have all the environmental approvals in hand and we can begin that work very quickly. So, for six oh two, six oh eight, six thirty, you'll see the survey stakes out there. Six thirty, we have three things going on at six thirty. And we have a bridge project that's about to begin. Sometime in the spring, they're gonna redeck the structure. Road will be closed for approximately four weeks. And as we get to three months out for that project, I know I said spring, but I think it's going to be later than that. I would like to push it into the summer so that we're not impacting school at all. But we'll have a community meeting and go through the scope of work. Some of the survey stakes that they're seeing on six thirty are relative to that. We also have the work for the rural rustics that we're trying to do preliminary engineering for. And then on top of that, if we have some additional funding this year, the grade coming south from Pumonkey Creek, if we have additional maintenance funds that we have towards the end of the year, I still wanna go in and do some drainage improvements there. So, your citizens will see us out there quite a bit as we're doing some work on those routes. The intersection improvements of Route three and twenty, those are moving forward as planned, on schedule, and we will have a public hearing for that this July. We also have improvements of Route three and twenty, intersection improvements that will be starting later this year. The funding for that should come onboard this summer, and we're gonna start with signals. But we're going to.
Alan, I, I may have misheard, but it sounded like you said Route three and twenty on both of those items. What was the first item?
Twenty and two thirty-one and three and twenty.
Oh, the first one was twenty and two thirty-one.
Correct.
And what, and what did you say about that?
The public hearing is currently scheduled for July. As soon as we have a fixed date, we'll share that with you. The goal is to have it in all areas, just like we did the C I M meetings.
That's the same for, uh, for three and twenty, public hearing then?
Three and twenty, we are going to share a diagram with the county for that work and for your review and approval, similar to what we did with Lake of the Woods.
Okay, all right.
Dual offset turn lanes.
Yeah, I understand. I've seen the, I've seen the, uh, diagrams. They look pretty good. Uh, but you said you were gonna have a public hearing on that?
I was mistaken. He called me on it.
Okay.
I was referencing the twenty-two, thirty-one project.
Okay, all right.
If you would like to have a public hearing.
No, no, we're, we're, we're good.
Okay, fair. Always wanna throw that out. So, we do have three traffic engineering diagrams that we're gonna give you, the Route fifteen, north of Gordonsville, the twenty-five, twenty-two, and then we'll provide the three and twenty. And you can, we'll look for your feedback and your consent to move forward on those projects and we'll plan that work this summer.
When do you expect to have those available for us?
This week.
Oh, okay.
I have them available. I just have to figure out how to get them to you. They're too big to email.
Oh, yeah, right, okay.
I'm gonna copy that. It's, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Alan.
Yes, sir.
What, when you said consent, what, were you looking for a, a motion, resolution, or just consensus of the board?
We have a revenue stream to the residency, the county safety and operational improvement funds that we wrote and started. And we're targeting, those funds are limited, and we're targeting demonstrated safety needs. We've had a lot of requests to leverage those funds for a lot of different things. So, we're going to begin instilling a practice where we identify the need, you identify the need, the locality helps us prioritize where we spend those funds, and then we simply get your consent. The policy itself indicates that we're supposed to have county consent, but it doesn't tell you how to do that. So, as a practice, I'm gonna start getting it.
If I could make a suggestion for the board is we'll get this. If I could make a suggestion for the board is we'll get this in and out to you all. And we can just have, if there are any comments, we certainly can have this as an action item or a consent agenda item. If there are no comments, then we can have essentially a motion to board gives consent on these identified projects. That way you have something official minutes and all that.
Great, thank you.
If that's all right with the board.
That's fine.
If it works for you, that would be great. Marquee road as far as projects under construction, thankfully, that is complete and I will strike that for your list for the next monthly update. We are working out on Catharpan Road still and our current plan is to finish that work this June. In July, as soon as the, the surface tightens up, we'll hard surface it. Same with six oh three, we have crews out working intermittently as weather permits. We're going to let traffic compact the stone subgrade on the entire length of six oh three and then hard surface at the same time as Catharpan. Additional road projects, with rumble strips, we are installing rumble strips on primary routes and high volume secondaries across the entire county. We're skipping sections and we've gotten some questions about that. It's based on our resurfacing schedule. If we're going to resurface this year or next year, we're not going to install rumble strips that we have to tear out. So we, if there's an area that we're concerned about, we may put them in anyway. They're not that expensive. But there's some areas where you'll see skips in the rumble strips. And that's simply because we're planning to resurface that route. Once we resurface it, we'll install the rumble strips. But those we've already seen a market improvement, got a lot of positive feedback, especially from distracted driving for those. The bridge project, again, Route six thirty, Matthews Mill and then six thirty-five, our public hearing is going to be this week. On six thirty, it will follow up and have a community meeting for that. And we're also, Jonathan's preparing a brochure that we're going to give to the residents along that route describing the three different things that are going on right now because we've gotten a couple of calls.
Especially the, the road closures and those kind of things, they, they need to be aware of that, understand what's going on.
Absolutely. Traffic engineering studies right now, we have the study of twenty and five twenty-two that I referenced. Twenty and two thirty-one, we are looking at interim improvements still, trying to determine, and some of those I'm going to follow up with you about.
Okay.
And Allison with an email with a series of recommendations, just to get your feedback on how you think that'll. We've got a couple of good ideas right there, things that we can do before the roundabouts install. We have three studies, six eleven, six eighty-six and six seventy-one that we're working on currently. The completed study that I did want to note again was the north of Gordonsville and we'll provide that diagram for you to review. County safety and operational improvements for twenty and two thirty-one, we would, if we can identify some interim safety improvements with you, we'll use those funds for that in five twenty-two twenty. And the only other thing I wanted to note is our crews, in addition to doing work on six oh three and all the other work they do in a day, they've already completed four hundred and nine work orders so far this fiscal year. So the team in Gordonsville and Roseville, they just do a great job. Really thankful for them. Any questions you have to see?
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, consent agenda.
Moved.
Second, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New business, agreement with the Town of Orange, sales tax recovery. David.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, this board entered into an agreement with the Town of Orange for an arrangement to repay some overpayment of sales tax. This goes back several years. Part of the original agreement was the board and the town council would enter into an agreement to use revenues generated by a cell tower. The town was hoping to recruit some cell carriers to be located on their property. That really has not turned out to be financially viable. And so town council is proposing to revert this to just make installment payments, which was one of the options early on over a ten-year repayment plan. This affects the change in, in, in the, in the plan. Town council has approved it, Mayor Mason has signed it. I believe the county attorney and the town attorney have worked on, on the language and so it's ready for your action.
Okay.
That, that was basically the default that, that we had arranged from the original agreement.
Yeah, they were given the option really at any point to take this path.
Yeah, so I would make the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. Okay. Old business, telecommunication, telecommunications, ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Yes, David.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you had a work session on this proposed telecommunication towers and facilities ordinance amendments. Just as a recap, our ordinance has been in effect, the current ordinance, since the late nineteen nineties. Technology has certainly moved on from where the ordinance language was addressing towers. You all went through and made certain changes to the ordinance. Those are documented in my transmittal memo. Planning and zoning director, as you recall, was, was unavailable, was out of town that week and, and Thomas Weisong sat in, inscribed these changes. Josh has looked over and just one made one suggestion on the structure type to really to make it monopolar, self-supporting design and making a maximum of thirty-six inches on the base. I think, Josh, that comports with what other languages and similar ordinances with these type of, of structures. And then also striking the commercial industrial, just in any zoning district. Really, it's at a point now where you all can continue to make any modifications. Or your action would be to initiate the planning commission process and bring it back to you after they hold a public hearing.
Okay. Any thoughts, any motions?
I'm glad we sent this to the planning commission.
Second, okay. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, department director, constitutional officer reports. First up, Ms. Vines.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here just to give you a few updates on the office on youth, but I really have some little visitors that want to speak with you guys this evening. So if you look at my snapshot, just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. We are doing the Pinhole Gardens again this year. I believe I already told you guys that we got our first sale in today for two that will be in the Lake of the Woods area. So those will be ongoing and we're happy to be working with D S S and forming a new partnership with them. So we're, we're excited. In the lower left-hand corner, our V J triple C A just wanted to bring attention that our GPS monitoring that we're doing in-house is doing really well. We've had quite a few kids hooked up. We have quite a few that are hooked up right now. But in addition to that, we're saving money with that program. We're also offering new programs on an online class basis. Things that we couldn't necessarily get our kids to within our community or right outside because some of our providers are pretty hooked up. So we're now offering an alcohol-wise class, marijuana one oh one, a shoplifting, a conflict-wise, which addresses abusive behaviors. Respect and resolve class, which touches on healthy relationships and behaviors. Nicotine one oh one, and then a combination eight-hour class for alcohol and marijuana. Again, it's all online, the kids have to make an appointment, come to my office and they have to sit there and do it so that they can be monitored. We get some feedback at the end on the progress the kids have made and they fulfill their obligations to the court. And as you can see by the statistics, we've been pretty busy, the judge has been pretty busy handing out lots of hours lately, so. We took our youth council members to Richmond on January thirtieth, just want to let you guys know. We went down, we had a great day. We got to see both Senator Reeves and Delegate Friedus. We didn't have an appointment with Mr. Friedus, but he got us in, which was great. Kids had a lot of great questions and Stacy Burleson accompanied, accompanied me with the students and we just had a really good day. So wanted to let you guys know that we were down there. And the last thing that I just want to touch on is to say thank you to Ann Iarden. She and Mr. Pendleton were both on the commission when I started seven years ago. And without them, I don't know what I would have done. They were great mentors. They helped me kind of wade through the position and, and feel my way and kept me in line. So I just wanted to say thank you to both of them. Otherwise, I'd like to invite Ashley to come up to introduce our little friends. And I think they're a little nervous and excited at the same time.
They've been very quiet.
They've been very good.
Very good.
I got hugs when I walked in, I was very excited.
We won't bite.
Well, some of us don't.
I see.
Okay. So as you all know, we are in year three of our current V H Y grant, which funds tobacco prevention programs for youth in Orange County. And we have been implementing a program called Positive Action for the entirety of this current grant cycle. Positive Action works by teaching and reinforcing the intuitive philosophy that you will feel good about yourself when you do positive actions. We generally serve an average of a hundred and twenty-five kids during any given quarter. But we have consistently had forty-five to fifty-five children attend regularly enough to be considered fidelity participants. They receive lessons on a very regular basis. So we've been very pleased with that, given the fluid nature of our aftercare programs. Today, we have selected nine students who've attended regularly over the course of our grant and of their schooling. Some of them are first grade, so they've only been for two years. To help explain a little bit about what they have learned during their time with our facilitator, Meg Camp each week. Even though we will not be continuing Positive Action in F Y nineteen at the start of the new grant cycle, we will be continuing to implement tobacco prevention programming with our elementary school aged youth. Because we've been pretty pleased with how that's worked. We will also continue to do it with the middle school range and various programs with the high school age. So I'd like to take a moment to introduce our Positive Action facilitator, Meg Camp. Meg also works with our other grant programs through this grant and through our parent education grant. So she facilitates a lot of things for us. She's come to be known lovingly as the Positive Action Lady. So I'm going to let her say something for just a second, if you want to.
Absolutely.
Yes.
It is my pleasure to introduce you to these nine young people who have had the pleasure to teach over the last couple of years. They're just a drop in the bucket of the amazing Positive Action kids that we have in our community. And so I'm going to have them share with you what it means, what their understanding is of Positive Action. Lauren, you want to go first, sweetie pie? Okay.
This camp makes us think positive things instead of negative things.
Awesome. Jackson, you're next. No, you're too nervous? Okay, how about you, Theo?
I have been a positive action for three years now and I have learned how to turn negative action to a positive action.
Awesome. Wilder, will you explain this?
First, you think good thoughts and then you think, I mean, first you think good thoughts. And then good actions, then you. First, think good thoughts and then you think good actions. Then, then you think good feelings. The opposite of that is negative thoughts. That makes negative actions and then that makes negative feelings. You switch by thinking a positive thought that makes a positive action, that makes a positive feeling.
Natalie, will you tell us what you found?
Miss Camp helps us turn the negative side on her chart into the positive side. We learn about this in the story she reads us. Sometimes if I am being negative toward someone, I will turn it positive by saying sorry. I've learned that if you're, you're being mean to someone, then you should try to be better and more positive. We can do this by being happy and kind to others and by controlling our emotions.
Yes, please, will you step up so they can see you?
Miss Camp has taught me to do nice things and to.
Talk.
Talk it out to solve the problem when we do not nice things.
Yes.
Each week we learn keywords such as kindness and positivity. I think about what this, Mrs. Camp teaches us and it helps me each week so I can use those keywords.
I learned that Miss Camp always says to not be negative and that we need to be wise with our actions. I use this in my classroom and at home.
Yes, sir.
You, you said that the grant, we got one more?
We got one more, I'm going to read it for him. Jackson, are you ready? Okay. Says, Miss Camp has taught us not to be negative. Kicking someone is negative, but never kicking them in the first place is positive.
You said that the grant was not going to, for the youth was not going to be there for next year?
No, it was funded for the next three-year cycle, but we're going to try a different program since we've done this one for three years. But we're going to continue to work with our elementary school age range.
But with a different program?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. We're actually going to do the Strength and Families program that we've done for nine years now. We're going to expand on that a little bit and do a fourteen-week version of the program for the six to eleven age range. So we're still working with the elementary range. We're also going to continue to do the ten to fourteen program. So we're catching that, that group as well. So we are continuing, we just are shifting it. But we wanted to give you an example of our, our experience working with elementary age with this grant for the first time for three years. It took them a lot of courage to come here and, and do this and they've been very excited.
They did very well.
Very well.
Very well.
And it, it's interesting, you're, you're learning about making choices, you know? Even, even when you look like me, you still have to realize that you have to make good choices. It's all about choices and I think that's, that's, that's a great background for Dave when you look at me.
If you all don't mind, could we get a quick picture before we go to the next question?
Sure, absolutely. Come on up.
Yeah, everybody come on up, line up around us. We don't bite, trust me.
So will you sure? Well, they're getting ready. What is the cost for one of those cars?
I'll double check.
Thirty, it's thirty.
Thank you.
Thirty dollars?
Yes. Here, you guys spread out.
I'll get some line though.
Yes. Isn't it? That's why I wear my glasses. But I can, that's right, I can make it big so I can see it.
Just like one knows it.
Yeah.
Very good.
You like them?
Get my phone out of the way. Everybody ready? One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Got it.
All right. Thank you very much. Excellent. Are they going to stay or are they going to? Yeah, I was going, I was waiting to get.
We pushed a limit on their, on their tolerance.
Yeah.
They were good.
If I was that age, by now I'd be like, oh, it's really more than enough.
That's right.
I'd have been there as the start.
Thank you all. Well, Nikki, you have an act to follow there. Yeah, that's right.
Because then I wouldn't have a job. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. So we combined, actually, the Senate consolidation and the biannual report. Because when we thought about what has happened recently, well, we're a new agency, so there is no biannual report to give you because we just started February first. So at exactly oh six hundred hours on February first, the E C C stood up and started dispatching law enforcement calls. We handle obviously now the calls to the sheriff's office, the Town of Orange and the Town of Gordonsville Police Department. For fire and rescue, there has been no change. As you know, the public expectations for fast response times, fewer errors in the consolidate. This consolidation has actually proven to that. In fact, Mr. Davis stopped in this afternoon and Mr. Crozier, we met you at the door because we weren't going to let you in with the incident from this morning. And it was seamless to have the nine-one-one call takers sitting next to the fire rescue dispatcher, sitting next to the sheriff's office dispatcher. There was no delay in transfer of information. Previously, we would have had to kept the nine-one-one caller on the phone. Somebody would have had to have dispatched fire rescue, then pick up the phone to the sheriff's office, then relay, relay the information and then finally give it out on the radio. So all of that has gone and has made this process seamless. So already we're seeing the positive impact on having everybody under the same, under the same roof. As fire rescue is getting toned out, sheriff's office is getting dispatched and updates. That's, was fantastic. They're still working just to fine tune some things. Tomorrow, our fourth nine-one-one position goes in and unfortunately, we tried to get it all done by February first, but there was just some, we just ran out of time and people to get it all done. But that will be installed by tomorrow. We're adding, first we thought, when we wrote this memo, we were just going to actually add one more V S internal. We're going to actually add three more V S terminals. And that's the ability for us to run criminal histories, run traffic. If you do a traffic stop and the officer needs a driver's license or a tag, all the dispatches. If you do a traffic stop and the officer needs a driver's license or a tag, um, all the dispatches now have the capability. Uh, currently, there's one VSIN terminal serving three law enforcement agencies, and it simply is just not enough for the call volume and how much, um, how much stuff we do with, with this terminal. Uh, we did look, if you remember, I did propose a quote to you back in the fall about combining VSIN and the CAD terminal together. Originally, we were given an eleven thousand dollar price quote. When it came down to it, it was a forty thousand dollar cost. Uh, we decided not to pursue that for, for obvious reasons. Uh, but that will become part of the CAD RFP, that that piece will be integrated into the CAD system. From this though, we would definitely like to recognize Sheriff Mark Amos and the uh, Chief Deputy Major Mike LaCass. Um, they looked at me, because I was gonna coordinate with, with CAD's office, with Public Works, to help move boxes. And the sheriff looked at me and said, "No, Nick, we have a truck. What time do you need me here?" I said, "Six AM, Sheriff," and he goes, "Okay, you label the boxes, we'll move them." And him and um, the major did exactly that. Um, so we didn't actually have to call in any extra hands to do that. Uh, so within the first hour, um, they got some trustees to help, they loaded it up, they showed up here at six o'clock in the morning, and by seven o'clock, the boxes were unloaded. And I think they're still sprawled out in the EOC, so forgive us there. So, you know, the sheriff did not have to do that for us and was willing to do that. Also Larry Clement and his IT department, they too showed up at oh-six-hundred, well, actually zero-five-thirty that morning, and started strip, stripping the equipment that we needed from the sheriff's office and bringing it over here. Uh, we have worked around them, over them. Um, they'll be underneath desks while, I think some of you walked in, found me underneath a desk just recently, um, as we're trying to just piecemeal everything back together. Um, so they have spent countless hours uh, working with us and not just making sure that we're oper- operational, that we're resilient. When we had the power outage, we didn't lose a thing. It was fantastic, uh, other than the internet, which we have no control over. Uh, but the, um, you know, we had done our homework and we've actually planned, planned correctly. We're still fine tuning stuff, but I think we're gonna be doing that for the next six months. Um, but the people who deserve the most recognition are staff. Um, we took s- staff and we threw them into the deep end. We did issue life preservers, but that was about it. Uh, and we, uh, they have done a, y- you have dispatches who have never seen a warrant before, have never dispatched a police uh, officer on a call before. And you've got other dispatches who have never worked a structure fire before. And we threw them all into one, into one room, said, "Sorry that we haven't given you enough training, good luck." And they have really just risen and gone above and beyond. Um, the feedback that we've gotten from the sheriff, from the chief of police has, has been phenomenal. Since February first, we've actually handed multiple structure fires. In fact, I've dispatched four of them out of eight, and there were actually a couple of them that were working. Um, multiple brush fires, um, multiple CPRs. Uh, we've also had a shots fired type incident. We've had several overdoses, we've had um, checking details, and we've had two warrant addictions. And that's in the first thirteen days that we've been operational, and then obviously this, um, this incident this morning. We did go ahead though and implement a DAO directory on the sheriff's office phone line with the sheriff's permission. Uh, we were finding that we were just inundated with um, with phone calls, and that if you were actually calling the dispatch center, you were actually getting a busy line, and that wasn't acceptable to us. And we just ran the numbers after twenty-four hours, and it's cut our phone volume um, by fifty percent. And we were actually spending most of our time taking these calls and just simply transferring them. It wasn't that they needed a deputy or needed to speak to anyone, they simply just needed to be transferred to another department. And by doing that, it's also cut our transfers by about seventy percent, and that's just in a twenty-four hour period. Uh, so that is, we can't thank the sheriff enough for allowing us to do that.
Excuse me, Nikki, that's the six-seven-two-twelve-hundred number.
Correct.
That used to be the general administration number to the sheriff's.
Where does that ring now? Does it ring at the sheriff's office, or how does that...
No, so when you, when you call it, it was ringing directly into the nine-one-one center, onto the non-emergency lines. Um, but now with the voice recording is, "You've reached the Orange County Sheriff's Office, if you have a life-threatening emergency, dial nine-one-one. If you need to report a crime, speak to a deputy or animal control, press one. If you need to speak to the sheriff, press two." And it's actually filtering and...
Yeah.
Uh, it's actually been quite nice. So the, if you don't want to go through the message, the one-two-three-four gets you directly, um, still gets you directly into dispatch. But yeah, when we realized that we were busying our admin lines out in a four-person nine-one-one center, we knew something wasn't right.
Well, is there, is there a, i- is there another number that if someone wants to call the sheriff's department, they should call?
Um, as long as they call that six-seven-two, as long as they call the twelve-hundred number, we will get them to where they need to go to. So if they need to speak to a deputy, we will take care of making sure that happens. Um, if they need to speak to the sheriff, um, you can hit two and that will get you to, to the sheriff. Um, so we will, if they're not sure, I think if you hit zero, and it brings it to, directly to us. Yeah.
You're still the default.
Correct.
If all else.
If all else fails, yeah. Um, but yeah, just to see that in a twenty-four hour period, it was...
But you have to pare down what you have to deal with considerably.
Yeah, and so it just shows you that the majority of those calls were transfers out, uh, as opposed to actually needing to speak to a deputy or report a crime. So, it was just kinda eye-opening in twenty-four hours. Yeah, how much, you know, how much of that was just um, transferring of calls, and that's what was busying out the phone system.
There's a cow on the road.
That comes to us. So you can still get to us with that. Um, but if you knew you were in an auto accident and you needed the records from that, you can now just get to the records department directly. Uh, you don't have to come for us, for us to find out what you need, for us to transfer you. Uh, we've taken, you know, the middleman out of it basically. So, um, the other thing that you have in front of you too, I think I talked about it, if you could scroll back up to the top of the memo, is we had talked about designing the new logo, and we're very proud that we actually have the, the new logo in, in front of us. Um, obviously, uniforms are coming, uh, because we just released this uh, February first. And um, staff are the ones who designed this, not, not, not me. We did send it off to somebody to make it look professional. Um, but they chose that they wanted to be the emergency communications, that E-nine-one-one is what they did, and that they serve. And they put the four agencies that we actually provide services to and captured that into one patch. And if you walk down the hallway, I'm sure you've seen the patches actually hanging. So, we're excited to actually be able to start ordering the uniforms and getting everybody um, as one unified group, so.
How, how would you characterize the staff reaction to the different types of calls now? Is that, is that something that they're uh, enjoying the variety, or is it intimidating, or what?
All of the above. The first word that comes to mind, I hate to say it, is, is overwhelming. Uh, but then the second word that comes to mind is excitement. They want to know, they're asking questions. You can see the fire rescue folks are like, "How do you, how do you run a tag? How do you do this stuff?" Um, and they, they've just, and then the sheriff's office staff, um, they're like, "How do you dispatch an ambulance out? How do you do this stuff?" And it's definitely been eye-opening for both of them to actually see what it takes to dispatch a um, a structure fire. And it's been eye-opening on the, how much call volume is to the sheriff's office. So overall, there is definitely...
It seems that the nine-one-one center knows much more about everything that's going on in the county rather than just one segment.
Really does.
Yes. Yeah.
I've, I've been through, over there three or four times and extremely organized. The uh, you know, you would expect a little bit of uh, trouble right now, but uh...
Chaos, was that the word?
Yes, I was, I was trying to stay away from chaos, but uh, yes. And uh, everything has been fantastic.
I was questioning it up until about last Friday, like, what did I do?
And I think we're extremely fortunate, especially what's going on with one of our adjoining counties right now. Uh, they're going through, this county went through about twenty-five years ago. And uh, it, it makes me feel really good to, to know that we have a very competent center, a very organized center that, uh, is working for the citizens.
And I think it's, it's clearly a better service to the citizens, because there, there's no bouncing around depending on the nature of the call and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yes.
And I actually saw the sheriff smile the other day.
I saw him leaving within the last couple of days, and he said, "Brrr..." He was here to work out a couple of minor things, but he was, he was smiling, so I think you're...
Yep.
Yeah, there's been a lot of back and forth phone calls, yeah. It's um, you know, we never anticipated busying up the phone lines. Okay, now, now what's the plan, so, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just certainly recognize Nikki, uh, did volunteer for this uh, back in, in, in October. And the sheriff and Chief Deputy made me a call to me saying, "We just, we need to do something, they're at a critical, critical point." And um, I guess all three of us looked at Nikki and said, "Here, go with it." And uh, without any hesitation, she jumped in. Part of this was building the airplane as we were flying it. And, and, and her leadership certainly has, has risen to the occasion, so I certainly recognize her and all the other folks. And the sheriff and I have been on quite a bit of communication as well with Chief Deputy. And they, they, everything is going as well as could be expected, understanding that there are going to be issues and problems. So, uh, right now, we're in a good spot, and uh, as this building comes along, then I think these folks will transition into a, a real good working environment.
As someone who was present, um, when the uh, split occurred, it's very gratifying to see the nine-one-one center come back together. So thanks to Nikki and to uh...
Your contribution for next collection.
To uh, Sheriff Amos, uh, for, uh, for making it all come together and work.
Yeah, we, we realize that a transition like this doesn't just happen uh, by sitting around and watching. It's somebody needs to provide the leadership and the direction and, and frankly, the determination. Some of it comes down to just a absolute determination to, to see it through and make it, make it happen. You just have to uh, get in there and keep scratching till it's, till you get the right answer. Clearly, that's, you, you had to do a lot of that, whether it's, as you say, crawling under a desk to find the right wire or whatever. It's uh, you know, you have to do what it takes in, in cases like this.
The Botox help really helps.
Botox.
He said he forgot I was that old, that's what the Botox guy helps.
Anyway, we, we thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank your, uh, your staff for us.
Yeah.
Old staff and new staff.
All, yeah, all, all the staff.
And, and we look forward to, and the second week of April will be National Telecommunicative Week, and it will actually be a combined, combined event. And hopefully, we'll have new uniforms to actually show off, so we'll be sending, uh, save-the-date invitations out shortly.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, comprehensive plan review. Mr. Fritter. Been five years, and so you're, you've been part of that. I did make the connection tonight.
Um, so this is really just an informational item. As you know, five years are up since two thousand and thirteen. Uh, state code says that we at least have to review the currently adopted plan. Uh, that task falls upon the planning commission, so we just wanted to put it on your radar. The uh, planning commission will be at least tentatively reviewing that at their next meeting, just on March first. Uh, so I believe I remember I indicated if you have any preliminary thoughts or suggestions or tasks that you want them to consider, uh, go either, either communicate that with your commissioner or directly. Um, Mr. Chairman, if you wanted to take some time now and discuss that, we can, or we can let the planning commission do their thing.
Are you going to provide them uh, any thoughts that you have on, in terms of either particular sections or topics or anything like that? Or, or is, is this just sort of an open discussion at this stage with the planning commission?
I've had uh, at least two vocalized thoughts, I'll say. We should probably go ahead and look at the uh, land use section and the land use map in particular. Just recognizing that things have changed in five years. Now, what direction they'll go with that, I'm not sure. Uh, and for us, it makes a lot of sense. Our land use section is just, it doesn't give a lot of guidance when we get SCPs and rezonings in particular. So I would like to at least structure that to give us a little more ability to recommend on a bit of a sure foot, and then you all uh, a more sure footing when you deny or approve applications. So that would probably be my recommendation to them.
Are you talking about more, more of a definition a- as to the lines on the map in essence, or what? I'm a bit rough on you.
For, for example, when you uh, you go to the land use section in the plan, it has them spelled out. You know, your agricultural A-one, your village, uh, I think economic development's still in there. And it gives a, a really, really brief description of kind of the intent of that future land use area, but it doesn't really give you any guidance when it comes to making decisions on how to actually implement that. The village in particular, I've had the question, "Well, what is a village?" And I said, "Well, what do you think that says?" And they said, "I don't know." I said, "Well, it kind of says what it says." So, um, make, giving more specifics to that, I think will make everybody better off here. So I think we'll start with that and see where they want to go.
Okay, I mean, the A-one, unless I'm mistaken, and discourage anything, except for farming.
It basically says little to no population growth is expected. That's usually the big...
The whole tone of that is, you know, we don't want anything to change, basically, in any A-one.
What you're, what you're saying is if somebody says, "I wanna, I wanna do some development in a village," there isn't a lot of basis for saying, "This is, this is appropriate or it's not appropriate."
I'll have to point to the most recent one, which is the Unionville Dollar General. It was a really good case in point. Really didn't have a sure way to go there. I think you all made the right decision with that application, but regardless, I, I think it would be, we would all be better served if we had a, a more um, more focused section to look at, make decisions from.
Well, the, the, the Barbersville Village has got an overlay, and that, I, I would think would give you quite a bit of, of direction. Is that correct?
It definitely does now. That was the first time that we've actually taken steps to implement the village concept, you know, codify something, and um, I, I think that was...
And there was, there was, there was talk at, at that time that that would be the first one. Of course, it was talk in nineteen ninety-six that the Barbersville Park would be the first one, and the other districts would follow. And it's, it's working out real well.
It's still following.
They're just way back there.
They're not catching, that's really...
But uh, there was, there was the idea that, that the uh, the Unionville and Locust Grove, which, those are the other two villages, correct? Uh, that, that overlay plans would be developed for them. So is, is the planning commission looked at that at all, has there been any discussion of that at all?
Might have been a, a comment a year ago, but we'll, I'll stoke that fire and see where it goes.
But wouldn't that make, wouldn't that make, wouldn't that be something that the new comprehensive plan would, would wanna, would wanna look at?
That would be my recommendation.
It sounds like it, it, you're, there are a couple of focused items that you're, be your least initial recommendation to the planning commission. As opposed, I mean, doesn't it sound like th- this is a situation where we need to do a complete rewrite and, and that, or any of that? Because that's a, that's a very different kind of task than, than a taking sections, or as we've done a couple of times, add, doing amendments and those kind of things.
I, I will say, when you go to the goals section, um, we're on, we're on track. I haven't actually looked at the goals and how we're succeeding them, but we're actually doing a good job and meeting a lot of those, uh, for what it's worth. So I would say we stay coarse on those, maybe tweak some of them, but land use is the section that really needs some attention.
Anything else? All right. Uh, county attorneys' report?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Administrator, Tourism Advisory Committee.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, uh, we've had a standing tourism advisory committee. It's gone on long, uh, under a, I guess, number of different reworks and things. And I think uh, with uh, with Landis-Carter's uh, becoming the tourism manager, we have a more, I guess, focused uh, purpose for this tourism advisory committee. We're really divided into stakeholder groups. Um, our recommendation is that you can see those that are, are, are really interested in participating are on the, on the chart. Uh, in a different color are the ones that are coming on and who have expressed an interest in this. And we did this from a stakeholder, hospitality, retail, recreational lodging, and story. And uh, they would, uh, these members would serve until they were no longer interested, either affirmatively saying they no longer were interested in serving, or their attendance started dropping off. We didn't want the, feel like we need to get into attendance rules or anything like that, for now. Um, and then if uh, there are new people that come along or those that have to fill slots that are on there, they would always be subject to the board's approval. So, uh, I'll answer any questions that...
Well, you said, it's my understanding that w- w- without objection, this, this committee has been appointed. It's not a board, a board appointment. Is that correct?
The, this slate of folks will be appointed from this point forward. That's on the roster that's there now, and that is, um, if there are vacancies...
Who appoints them?
The board.
The board.
The board.
The board, okay, the board does appoint.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
You, you appointed the, the original incarnation of this, and we wanted to make sure...
These are some additions.
Would you check that out? My, my recollection is that they were, that, that the board uh, acknowledged the appointments but did not make the appointments. But, but I, I can't, I'm trusting my memory here, but, but, so be careful.
I believe that's the way it was.
But it's a fine line, but I, I, I think there were, we made a distinction intentionally between appointment... between appointment by the board and sort of, without objection, the board accepts the appointments coming from, uh...
Distinction with the different stakeholders. Stakeholders already involved in the...
I mean, that, that, does anybody else remember it that way, or?
Yes, yes. I, I, I don't wanna, you all, uh, maybe I got a little wayward on...
That may have, you all may have changed that. I, I don't think it's the way it was years ago, but you all may have changed it to that, or decided on that approach.
Do you wanna just acknowledge this roster, and then if there are vacancies?
I would suggest that we just, I mean, with all the other groups, we appoint, and I think we oughta just continue with that. Otherwise, we got, we've got this confusion of different, different, uh, act, different actions for different groups.
And I actually had a conversation yesterday with, um, this is Sedwick, um, the pavilion at Lakeland Farm.
Carolyn?
Yes, thank you. She...
No, Janet.
Janet, Janet.
Janet, not Karen.
Yeah, she has, uh, expressed a, a great desire, uh, to, to serve on this, and after reading the areas represented, would probably be a, a very good fit if, um...
Let, me, uh, I think that would be...
I happened to be at a, a meeting, and she expressed it, so.
Let, what we, why don't we do this? If, if, if you all wanna acknowledge or appoint this roster, then I'll have, uh, Lori contact and Miss Sedwick explain what's going on, and then we would bring that as a consent agenda item back at, at another board meeting.
We would move that we appoint this roster as the tourist advisory committee.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Carolyn. Um, the next item, uh, we had was the, uh, speed study, and I'll let Ms. Simpson handle that.
Members of the board, in, in front of you is a request for a speed study on Mustafield Road. Um, Mr. Crozier had several concerned citizens reach out to him regarding, um, the speed and safety of those that live on the road, and the school buses that, that travel on the road, um, noting that there are some sight-distance challenges, um, on top of the excessive speeding. So, with you all's approval, um, by motion, you would adopt the attached resolution, and then I would forward the resolution and the letter to VDOT, and it would be added to their list of speed and safety studies to be completed.
Okay.
I would still move.
Move, second, second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You next. Okay. Uh, let's see, board comment? Any board comment? All right, any questions on the information items? How about appointments?
Uh, I want to, um, reappoint Jason Capel to the Planning Commission.
Okay, any others?
Uh, I reappoint Jennifer Holera as well.
Okay. Any others? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let's see. Finish this after all. Calendar items, uh, we have one item to, uh, had a public hearing for the, uh, microbreweries and distillery amendment, uh, for, do we have a date for that, uh, Allison?
There was a memo i- that we put together in the packet, which we don't traditionally do for calendar items, but, um, the Planning Commission did have their public hearing on February first, forwarded the Board of Supervisors, um, a resolution recommending approval. Um, the first available meeting date, as we noted, would be Tuesday, March thirteenth. Um, you all are scheduled to have your joint meeting with the Virginia Cooperative Extension Office that evening, and we suggested if you wanted to move forward with that meeting date, um, setting the public hearing and public comment period at seven-thirty instead of seven, it would be shown on the agenda that goes on the website, and it would be reflected on the public hearing notice that goes in the newspaper. Um, if not, we, we don't have any public hearing scheduled for March twenty-seventh, and you could choose to do it at that meeting at your regular time as well.
Uh, I guess a question to Josh, is there, from your perspective, is there a difference between the thirteenth and twenty-seventh for any projects or anything pending, or any of that stuff?
Not for us, no.
I'd be asking Phil.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I think Phil has somebody he's working with.
He, he does.
He indicated a year timeframe, so I don't think that a month would stall or hinder his progress.
I just think it's easier to better.
I'm just thinking, there, there's some interest in this.
Okay.
Let's, let's make sure that we don't have any barriers.
Yeah.
Okay. So, your preference is seven-thirty on the thirteenth, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Somebody gonna propose that?
Not so moved.
Okay. All right, so that's what we'll do, seven-thirty on the thirteenth. All right.
Ready?
Yes.
All right, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss enclosed meeting the following. Two matters concerning the discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, or disciplining of specific employees and appointees of the public body. Discussion or consideration of this disposition of publicly-held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy